Ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, it is six o'clock. Let's call the meeting to order. Call of the roll. Mr. Forrester.
I'm.
Ms. Edler.
Present.
Ms. Schaefer.
Present.
Mr. Campbell.
Present.
Mr. Fordice.
Present.
All present and accounted for. Love to see that. Uh, let's see here. Onto number four, approval of the agenda. And we don't have to change that because Jill made it.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Forrester.
Hi.
Edler.
Hi.
Schaefer.
Hi.
Campbell. Fordice. Speaking of Jill, onto number five, Polk County, not you Jill, that's, sorry. Uh, Polk County Board of Supervisors, Jill Altucher, did I say that right?
I wasn't gonna try your name.
The wise ones don't. Uh, we've got a check presentation to City of Elkharts.
Alright, so where would you like me? Where do you want me to?
Up here, up there, wherever?
Um, you have a check presentation on, but since I'm here, do you mind if I take just a couple other minutes and update you guys on some of the things we've been doing at the county level or just want them on?
Counsel, any objections?
Nope.
I'm fine with it.
Well, first of all, thank you for keeping me on the agenda. I have Gable here with me tonight. We thought we had an emergency tennis banquet tonight. I misread the email. It's tomorrow night, it was a first year of tennis, so he came with me tonight, and then I will go with him tomorrow night. So, that is how it works when you are a working supervisor, right?
Yes.
Hello to the group, the council. Thank you guys for your service. I started the city councils for sixteen years. I believe that local government's where it's at. It's closest to the people. Thank you to the community and the citizens that are here. I'm really impressed with the turnout that you have today.
Pass two.
So I represent. There you go. Did you all come for the check presentation?
Say yes.
Yes.
Alright, well, I am the new county supervisor and I represent District Two, which means nothing unless you put it in terms of the nine of the seventeen cities that are in Polk County. Those are mine. So I extend from Urbandale all the way over to Mitchellville. In fact, we're going to Mitchellville City Council next, so I do appreciate you putting me early on the agenda. That being said, I was really interested in your water treatment expansion project, so I might either stick around till you're a part of that or try to get some update later. You know, that's good shit than Ron about you when you spend sixteen years on the city council. That is interesting to me. As far as at the county level, I ran on fiscal responsibility, transparency, and accountability, and I think that we're making great improvements in all those directions. I do have a handout for you guys. I'll hand to you. I'm gonna keep one just so I can refer to it myself. So this says in the first hundred days, we're about day one thirty-nine now, so we've been starting to add on to the bottom of this. But what we've done, in recent memory, over fifteen plus years, no one remembers us ever doing a tax for the reduction. We did do a ten cent levy reduction, and that is a start. Understanding grimes, we've done over two dollars in the last seven years, but you have to start somewhere. Grimes, we started at ten dollars, I'm sorry, ten cents, we're down to ten dollars now. Um, we started with ten cents here. So, it is, like I said, it's a trajectory, it's a start, it's a principle, it's a philosophy, it's looking at what we can do to maximize services, efficiency, but doing it in a fiscally responsible manner. We were proud of being able to take that vote. Another thing we've done for accountability and transparency is that we've really tried to streamline the process and get people engaged. We could have it in the evening. I'm really impressed. I've been on bigger city councils, right? We don't get this kind of turnout at our council meetings, but what we try to do is whether it's in the day or the evening, we want to make sure that it's accessible. So if you turn on your TV because you aren't gonna make it to church on Sunday, but you can like hit the little button and immediately put streaming into church, we've done that now for the counties. So we've made our website easier. You can stream into our board meetings. You can also watch them. So we have them archived for you. We also have put it on the agenda with hyperlinks, and I think that's important because up until the second meeting of January, you would get the agenda, but if you wanted to know any of the information beyond just that one-page sheet, you'd actually have to go to the auditor's office and ask for it. We've made that available. So, we're trying to make it more transparent. We're trying to make it easier for our citizens to follow along. Similarly, we have instituted more, um, board staff meetings than ever before, so when we have big issues coming up, we try to make sure that we have all, everyone sitting at the table and asking the questions that are needed. And again, it is available for streaming as well as online, so that you too can follow along and see what decisions we're looking at. And again, with the budget process, streaming, availability, putting the budget and the agendas out there. We, for the first time in sixteen years, didn't take a payroll, so we were kind of excited about that. And then, we put this one on, um, we're going back to that board staff. We had an hour and a half board staff on the medical examiner. We just recently consolidated. We're merging with the state. The state has a state-of-the-art facility that they're putting a large twenty million-plus-dollar expansion on, and ninety-seven other counties use the state medical examiner for their autopsies. So we're still gonna have our county medical examiner to do death certificates, run the day-to-day office, but as far as the autopsies, we're moving with the state. That saved us twenty-five, thirty-seven million dollars off the top, and an ongoing savings we figure of over a million dollars. So again, trying to be efficient, trying to maximize your guys' tax dollars. What's not on the sheet yet, because we're just in the stages of moving forward, is a strategic plan. There has not been a strategic plan for Polk County in the last twenty-nine years, and I think to go on to that, that trajectory that we're talking about, we have to have a vision, because we speak with priorities, about our priorities with our budget. And so, we want to get everyone in the room, working around the table, and figuring out what that vision looks like. So those are things that have been going on in Polk County. Do you guys have questions for me? Do you guys have questions for me? Alright, well, thank you for allowing me the few minutes to just let you know what's going on now for the exciting part, right? Alright, so there's all that stuff that we've been doing, but in addition, we have a partnership with Prairie Meadows. Prairie Meadows, we own the land and the facilities, so we have an agreement with them. They own the gaming license. It is one of only two nonprofits in the country, and that means that we are able to work and distribute the money back out into the community. Um, this is actually, so one of my more exciting parts, we have two-hundred thousand dollars that we are allowed to allocate within our district to different nonprofits, and I had four-hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars of requests coming in. Early on in my process of being a supervisor, I was meeting with all the city councils and mayors and administrators, by the way, I'm always willing to meet with you guys if you want, but we start with the mayors and the administrators, to see what the needs of the community are. I was so happy that you turned in an application for a security park system. You guys talked about this new park and how you wanted to make sure that it stayed safe, both the property and the people, and so today I have a ten-thousand-dollar check from the city of Elkhart for your security system. This is not the exciting one, although this is the one that the bank takes. But this is the one that I.
That one's equally as exciting.
But.
I said that one's equally as exciting then.
This one's equally as exciting, yes. Even with my bad handwriting and the faded pen, I would love to have a picture with the group and the check, and then, um, yeah, then I'm just undone it. You can go on the rest of the.
Yeah, I'd.
Should we go behind the flag or would you guys go?
Counsel, I'd say all of the staff.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Oh, well, go forward. Oh, hi. Well, nice meeting you.
She's supposed to be interested in aspects.
Are we squeezing?
I think we need to squeeze. If somebody wanna sit, so it's here, maybe. I'd probably sit in front of your names here. Your friendly names.
Oh, I see how this goes.
Your friendly names. Oh, okay. Okay, glad.
Very modest of you, Johnny.
Alright, I get it, I get it.
We can skip down, move down.
She told me to sit behind my name. I was just listening.
Alright, can you get?
One, two, three, eyes on me.
Don't put me in front of the dark.
Three, two, one. Perfect, I got like ten.
I like how everybody gets quiet during pictures.
I think.
Cause I was gonna get a ham now.
One more, one more, one more.
One, two, three. Oh, she's not a good one.
So, do you get that? We'll leave it right here.
Always on the seat.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Awesome. As, as Jill mentioned, I know we've been talking about that for a lot, kind of hot and off, and I know Parkin talked about it as well, so I'm glad, uh, glad to see we could get that and, uh, kind of get that process going. So again, Jill, thank you so much for that. Appreciate it.
I was gonna turn in an application.
Yes. Thank you, thank her.
Yeah, same for you.
Alright, on to number six, uh, citizen hearing and other communications. We'll start as always with Polk County Sheriff. Lieutenant, how you doing?
Hey, how are you?
Dandy.
Cut back and follow up with the chief, Sean.
Do you have any money for us?
No. So we had forty-five calls for service last month up here. A number of radar setups, traffic snouts up in that White Oak area where the construction traffic's been coming through. Other than that, really nothing out of the ordinary. Uh, last weekend, um, I was off, but checked in. He said they didn't have any issues or any complaints, uh, with everything that was going on. So.
Great.
Sound pretty good.
Yeah. How's that been with the traffic going? I know, I think Jill, you had asked last meeting, but just kind of echo off that with the extra traffic through White Oak and anything through here. Have you guys noticed anything?
Uh, yeah, obviously, you know, the obvious uptick in it and everything, you know, the busy times, showers and things like that. Uh, it seems like now that construction season has kicked off, you know, we, we try to spend time up here, spend some time in other places that we get complaints too, so.
True.
We just make it into the areas that we can when we can.
I do have a question. Up on Highway sixty-nine, where the north side is closed, there's still traffic coming from that way? Are they supposed to stop? Are they just going through? Because I was there when an accident happened last week and.
They're about a hundred and eighteen.
Yeah, so at a hundred and twenty-six. Yeah, right where the road closed sign, there's still people coming from that, that side of the development, and they're just going through, and there was an accident there. Are they supposed to stop? I mean, I just don't know if there's.
I'd have to check and see how they, if they can, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's confusing people. I was just curious.
Anything else, Lieutenant? On to letter B, Mr. Scott Dreher, Fire Chief.
Well, things just went steadily downhill. She had money, he had thirty-eight calls for service, I'm down to twenty-six calls for service. God, I just, one time I wanna be, I need to inflate numbers. So we had fourteen medical calls, one hazmat, um, four brush fires, believe it or not, we're still, even though things are turning really green, we managed to get a lot of ditch fires started. I couldn't quite understand it. Two vehicle fires and five rescues. Uh, we had a good run of bad luck. It has nothing to do with, uh, necessarily the, the traffic getting around here. It's out on the interstate. The interstate where they got it bottlenecked down, and then it jogs around, and they start closing lanes, and it doesn't take but one person to get crossways, and then everything comes to a screeching halt. So we were out there five, five different times. Um, we had the opportunity in a couple weeks, last couple weeks, to do some CRP training, Conservation Reserve Program. Um, farmers get paid to take ground out of production. It's highly erodible, things like that. And every few years, the ASCS Office, National Resource Conservation Service, whatever they're called now, says you shall burn it off. They have to, so. Some of them knew it themselves, some of them call us. It's a great training opportunity for us to, one, it's very controlled, so that way, once they light it and it gets out of control, we're not on the defense. We can go out there prepared on a nice night. Hey, it looks like the wind is just right tonight. Let's go do this now, because a vast majority of our brush fires, they're not started unintentionally in a ditch. They are control burns that get out of control. And at that point, then, we're just severely on the defense, and, you know, things get exponentially worse really fast. So, it's a good training opportunity, use some tools that we use a lot, but we get to use them in a controlled environment, practice ahead of time. So, we, we jump at the chance to do those. Um, anyway, we've had the opportunity to do that. We're also, we demoed for, um, for about sixty days, and we're going to purchase, it's rather nominal fee, I think it's ten dollars, but a, a, um, computer program to allow us to scan in maintenance records and vehicle checks, as well as our monthly checks on things like SCBA's. Um, a couple of our members are real computer whizzes, so they've spearheaded that. We've got QR codes to put on things that we can scan with our phones, be able to upload information, get rid of the old paper pen and pencil and get ourselves into the, into the twenty-first century. Um, saves a lot of extra BS when you can do it, do it electronically and digitally. So, short of that, I don't wanna jinx anything, but I'm gonna say it's, that's just all. I don't wanna jinx it.
Scott, do you know when, um, Hundred Forty-Second Street Bridge is opening up? I heard it was May, but I heard it was June, so I didn't know if you had any more insight?
I don't know for sure. It's a, uh, it's a convoluted effort.
It looks complete, I mean.
Well, the same crew that is working on that is also working on Hundred and Fifty-Eighth, and they're also the ones working on Two-Ten. So it's as, like, some days you'll see they don't have much work going on. They've got dirt to, to bring up on the shoulders, um, backfill alongside. You know, it keeps getting moved back, and I really don't understand why it's been a year and a half in the making, but as somebody smarted off, get a hold of the state. Um, what I have learned in the last two years is all these entities march to beat their own drum, and you've got, you know, it could be the city doing their own, uh, their own work on a, on a street, well, they don't have to talk to the county, then the county does work on their streets, and they don't have to talk to anybody, and then the state does work on their roads, they don't have to talk to anybody.
This sounds familiar.
Sounds like three months ago.
Yeah. I mean, it's what I dealt with a year ago.
Exactly.
With the, with our bridge being out, now Two-Ten. In fact, just as reference, you know, we've been out on the interstate a couple times for medical calls, and Ankeny's protocol, if you will, is that they don't use the turnarounds on the interstate, and somebody at the southbound rest area had to wait for an ambulance to go up to Highway thirty to get across to come back.
Wow.
Now, do you guys use the turnaround?
Hell, yes, I do. And in fact, and in fact, sometimes I'll even run interference and pull out and stop the damn traffic so somebody else can pull out, because I figure that's what we're there to do. We're there to respond to an emergency and not drive thirty extra miles to go up to Ames to get to the other side and come back. But there is no sense of urgency. It's just the way it is. So, no, of the meetings I've been to, there are no updates for anything being completed, to be bluntly honest with you.
Yeah, I tried to find some information out. I couldn't find anything. I saw one article that said June, but, uh, I'm not holding my breath, so.
I would not. You'll pass.
Thank you.
And if, in that case, call them.
Yeah.
So.
Make sure you're the northbound lanes if you're.
Oh, for sake of saying it, I know you do. As long as you're doing it safely, keep doing what you're doing. That's, that's, that's all I gotta say, so. There you go. Any other questions for Mr. Gray?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright.
That was one of your shorter speeches.
Alright, gravity is not always my thing, but sometimes.
We appreciate you as always, sir. Thank you. Have a great night. Alrighty, on to letter C, public comments. Anything not on the agenda? Sir?
Last meeting, we talked about the speed signs out here that we were talking about getting, you know, the potential radar or whatever. But, just a thought I had, I noticed that there is a bus stop now for the North Polk Schools at the corner of Madison and Maple. Uh, when that make, that makes that turn, it does not pass Maple, so it's right there on the corner. Uh, I don't have a daughter at that age at four school, but I noticed with the forty-five zone going that far, I've been passed multiple times, trying to turn left by people that are in a hurry, so just didn't know if there was conversation to extend the thirty zone, either past Madison or out past, uh, you know, the trailer court or whatever, just to help out with that, you know, having a lot of young kids is, I think the speed limit was there when the town pretty much ended there. Now I feel like the majority of the population is further east of that speed zone, so.
That conversation did come up. To give you a blanket answer, that conversation has come up. I've mentioned that in the past. It's gone long past ago. Um, I think we need to do additional traffic surveys and studies and everything, because as I've come to learn, you know, I try to just live in the, hey, this makes sense to me. Well, unfortunately, there's more to it than that. It sounds simple. Uh, apparently, when you do other things, you can mess other things up, as silly as that may sound. So, um, I would like to see that as well.
And I don't know, as well, going north on Grant, uh, we know kind of where the Kimberly development's going, and that, uh, the daycare is right there too, so I don't know if going further on Grant, northbound would, or to the north, not northbound, but north would help.
Yeah, I would, no, I agree. That'd probably be at a, at a later date because of the late, uh, the limited amount of traffic coming through there slash the, what's up there right now, but I agree with you. I'd like to see that at some point as well. So, um, no, we'd have to make some additional phone calls, and somebody who's in this room, I know we've talked with them, I'm not gonna point them out, but they've been, uh, on our team as far as potentially getting some traffic studies done and then doing some things like that. So, I'd agree, maybe we revisit that definitely sooner than later, uh, in addition with, as the industrial parks continues to fill out and all that, so. There's a lot more. Well, I didn't wanna point you out, if you didn't wanna be pointed out, so. But, um, no, I'd agree with that.
If the, along with him, but if the city and the citizens will get a hold of the school and tell them to change your bus stop.
Sure. No, that's, that's an excellent point as well, so.
Sometimes the bus transportation director over there does not realize what it is. Like a lot of other things go on, they don't go out, drive it, see what it's like.
Sure, sure. No, all fair points. No, thank you guys. Anything else? Any other public comments? Going once, going twice? Sold? Or end, I guess? No, thank you both. Uh, on to number seven, uh, public hearing regarding Budget Amendment Number One to fiscal year twenty-twenty-four and twenty, uh, twenty-twenty-four dash twenty-twenty-five, uh, then, so we letter A, uh, well, that's backup stuff. I completely screwed that up, didn't I?
Yeah.
So let's try that again. Number seven, Public Hearing Regarding Budget Amendment Number One to Fiscal Year Twenty-Twenty-Four Dash Twenty-Twenty-Five Budget. I get a motion, second to open the public hearing.
Motion to open the public hearing regarding Budget Amendment Number One to Fiscal Year Twenty-Twenty-Four Twenty-Five Budget for Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Five Twenty-Seven.
Second it?
Yeah. Second to Jill? Forrester.
Hi.
Edler.
Hi.
Schaefer.
Hi.
Campbell. Fordice. Public hearing is now open. Who's giving us a little extra spiel about this?
Um, yes, so, uh, we prepared the budget amendment for this fiscal year that we're in. Um, so the state requires that we amend our budget if we're going to spend over what we budgeted. Um, this has to be amended by the end of May each year, and so there are three areas, um, that we looked at that we believe need to be increased. The first main one is, um, our transfers in. Dev has done a lot of work with clearing this up and getting our transfers in place and helping, uh, reduce some of our deficits by transferring lost into some of our capital project funds. Um, so that's background on that line item. Public safety, we also will, um, be overspending in. We did purchase some capital equipment with the fire department, the brush unit. Um, so that is where that comes into play. Debt service, um, I believe there was some interest payments that weren't accounted for, and that's where that small increase comes from. And then our enterprise funds, um, we did need to increase those as well. Um, just, I think our operating expenses were a little bit, we're, we're cutting it close with those.
Okay. Counsel, questions, comments? Thank you, Mr. Adams. Any comments for or against the amendment? Okay. I need a motion, a second to close the public hearing then?
Motion to close public hearing regarding Budget Amendment Number One.
Second. Second to Fordice. Forrester.
Hi.
Edler.
Hi.
Schaefer.
Hi.
Campbell.
Hi.
Fordice. Public hearing is now closed. Take us on to seven A, Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Five Dash Two-Seven, Resolution to Approve Fiscal Year Twenty-Twenty-Four Twenty-Twenty-Five Budget Amendment and Certification for the City of Elkhart, Iowa.
Motion to approve Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Five Dash Twenty-Seven.
Second.
Second to Jill? Forrester.
Hi.
Edler.
Hi.
Schaefer.
Hi.
Campbell.
Hi.
Fordice. Resolution is approved and passed. On to number eight, Veens, Trenton, Kim, Water Treatment Plant Expansion Project Schedule. Forrest.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Forrest Aldrich, Veens, Trenton, Kim. So, you remember back in March, I was at the council meeting, and the contractor had requested an extension of the water treatment plant to the middle of September, and we said, uh, let's wait a little longer, see what this looks like before we make any action. And what is going on, there's a conditioning process that takes several months, multiple months, uh, for a particular piece of equipment in the water plant, and that is still going on, still looking good, still on track, but, um, the piece of equipment is made by West Tech up in Ames, so locally, uh, local supplier of the equipment and manufacturer of the equipment. And so we've been bugging them, saying, okay, well, here's, since March, here's how it's been doing, and it's progressing. When do we think we might be able to be there, you know, have this conditioning process complete? And said, we don't need an exact date, you know, just some rough idea, and they're being radio silent, or we can't give that to you, we don't know. So, we bugged them again this afternoon, and, uh, we were communicating on all the emails, and they're still not giving us an answer on that. So I'm a little reluctant to just give them to the middle of September, when that may be more time than they need, may not be enough time, I think it's more time than they need, is what it is. Um, and then all of a sudden, uh, you know, the contractor goes away, and now we're not, you know, we don't have a water plant in September when we could have had it in July. So I'm a little reluctant, uh, to recommend accepting that request yet. Uh, the, the contractual completion date is the end of this month, so that's why they're asking. The contractor has been doing, you know, pretty good work. They've been here most of the time. Uh, I've been working with Ron and Tom and with Veens, Trenton, Kim. So I'm not opposed to giving them more time, but, um, I don't wanna give them too much or too little either. So I, my recommendation is to not take any action yet, and wait till the June meeting and, and see what we know at that date. Contractor's not gonna be happy about that, because they asked for this, and they've been pushing the manufacturer to give us this date too, because it's out of contractor's hands. Um, it's nothing they can do, nothing we can do. It's just a conditioning process that takes time. So that's kind of the schedule, um, but everything is going, um, going as expected, and, uh, as soon as that conditioning process is done, they'll, uh, they still have to tear down the old water plant. Not, not tear down, sorry. The building's not going away. There's some water equipment inside that has to come out. So, and we don't, we wanna make sure everything's good with the new plant before we move from the old plant. So, that's kind of the update on the schedule. As counsel said, let's give them till September fifteenth, which is the request. I'd be okay with that. Um, I'm not, it's not a hard, let's not do something, but, uh, just kind of, I'm a little reluctant to do that.
You're welcome to stay. You're welcome to whatever you need.
Stick around for a little bit. I gotta leave in fifteen minutes, but.
Make yourself comfortable. Oh, make yourself comfortable. All right, on to number nine, the consent agenda then. A lot under here this time, uh, do we have anything that we wanted to pull out and discuss?
Be good to talk about M, I think.
Agreed.
The urban revitalization area is that for the gas station or is that not?
That is, um, so we are amending that plan because we are, um. Eliminating residential tax abatements. That's what that is discussion. So it's setting the hearing for June.
And Katie, just, and you've mentioned in the past, but can you give us a quick clarification as to why we've got so much on the consent agenda? What the reason is behind that?
Um, yeah, basically for, um, so a lot of times cities will put. Routine business items under consent agenda for efficiency purposes. You can always pull them out to discuss them if you'd like. Um, ultimately the mayor does have, um, you know, authority of how we structure the agenda. So if you guys want to see it differently in the future, you sure can. Um, but I just noticed that we're having a lot of routine business. And, um, our, our meetings are getting a little lengthy, so that's the reason why there are under the consent agenda.
Nothing wrong with your conversation, but I agree. So, hell, if you guys have any feedback on the agenda, you know, feel free to let Katie know and. Copy me on the email just so I can see the feedback, but I have no issues just more or less for just, hey, here's why we're doing what we're doing. So. Okay, uh, then to Mr. Fordice's request, uh, let's pull letter M out and we can discuss that.
Yeah, so the group that is submitting the site plan, um, had representative at the. Uh, P and Z meeting last Monday night. So they, P and Z was the last Monday night. Um, so P and Z reviewed that and then did anybody from, I, I wondered, I. Um, so you wanted to share kind of with the council what the intent is and, and kind of what you're, to talk about, that'd be great.
Just in regards to the site planning, so really it's just a building. There's a prospective user that wants to use it as a. Baseball practice facility, indoor baseball practice facility. There's no tournaments or anything posed for it. It's really just. Uh, a location for them to have indoor practice.
And he mentioned that kind of runs more in the off seasons of, of baseball as far as traffic concerns for a hundred and twenty six and thirty eighth out there. Be in the evenings primarily after, or like off hours, uh, parents will be dropping kids off and then hopefully coming in town to grab dinner. Spend some money maybe potentially and then, and picking their kids up after an hour. So, um, and then he also talked about the potential in the future. Um, potentially using the outdoor fields as well or renting those from the city. Uh, as the facility expands and things of that nature. But in terms of just specifically about the site plan. Mike, if you wanted to give your comments or P and Z's comments, maybe this is the time to do that.
Planning the zoning review that we really had no objections to it, recommending the council approve the site plan. The usual caveat, you know, of satisfying any, any, uh, issues that the, uh, engineers had with it.
And I know you've been working with V and K on that, correct? And, and going back and forth on notes. There's been some progress there. I take it. Appreciate it.
Is his three T clubhouse, is it, is it for like a specific group of kids? Like is it for like North Pokes or for like, um, travel balls? Do you know anything?
They're kind of represented by, uh, the whole group that owns the lot.
I can, I can help with that if you want. So yeah, three Ts is a group. They operate out of Ames. They're looking to move closer to the metro. They do have their own softball, baseball, travel teams, but they also offer private instruction lessons. He mentioned they had kids coming all the way from way up north to all the way down by Pella and further south. And they, they form those teams and they're just looking for an indoor place to, to practice during the off seasons. And they like the adjacent. In adjacentness of the metro along with our exit being easy to get on and off the interstate.
Know you had mentioned there's not. The, I don't know what word I want to use, the projection of major issues with traffic or anything out there, but as the. Industrial park continues to grow, as town continues to grow, more folks move into town, um, my. Open ended question to counsel, I guess would be at what point do you guys want to start saying, hey, as we say yes to more folks moving in to the industrial park? Which we love, we absolutely love that. Do we want to say, hey, we, we need to start taking on traffic surveys, traffic studies, et cetera, et cetera with that? Is that something we want to begin here? This, we think this is a, um, said respectfully, a small enough, that low enough traffic. That would make an impact. Uh, I guess to my question, you guys, at what point do we start saying, hey, we, we need to do this with every new business that moves in or the. Key businesses that move in, I guess I could say.
I, I think the, uh, more important factor will be the, the time of day, what these ones being. Primarily off hours shouldn't affect the.
P and Z did, did discuss that. Um, we, during the conversation talked about. Just specifically the eighty acres to the north. If that annexation goes through and the land transfers happen and Travis and the group decide to. Uh, we would have to re-change some of the codes and ordinances, correct? And then obviously work with engineering to do that, but. We talked a little bit about the impact that just Kimberly Woods has had on the number of vehicles and your point about. More, more cars equal more people that are more likely to go fast because you just extend the odds out every time you add more traffic. So yeah, we, we did discuss that and. It was, I, I wouldn't call it an official recommendation, but it was definitely the consensus of the group that we, we start to look at that as we, um. Annex that next, if we annex that next eighty acres and begin to develop that out there. Same thing with future Kimberly developments as well.
So we're, so we're content with everything as of, as of right now, so to speak, but as, as if the eighty comes into play, then we.
Yeah, there's only one more, I think, one more buildable lot out there after this clubhouse gets put up, so.
Not to, you know, stick that with you guys, but just at, at what point do we have to, hey, we have to do this.
We'd have to re-change codes and ordinances and have hearings in a few months to put it in place. So it'd probably be good to start talking about it. So sooner than later, get it on the agendas for future months and start changing that.
Sure.
Bring them in there. I don't know how many of you guys have ever heard of Kingdom Courts? But they're down in Alba Industrial. They're right straight west or east of the sheriff's office. They're right straight west of the big Firestone building. They have a similar deal that they have down there, except theirs is basketball. And stuff and not baseball. And it's the same thing. It's in the middle of the industrial area. And the only problem they have is when they have their big deals down there is parking. In there. They do have a major issue with that in there when they have some of their events, which you wouldn't be having, but. To throw it in for a sec, they threw one in the commercial, it's a big commercial building down there that they built. You drive through there, headed towards the, the south and to there, it's on the, after you go through the curves, it's on the east side of the road. You, you. Look like another bill.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I was kind of looking at the parking lot here, you know. On the smaller size, I look at it, but it's, if it's not going to be like a jam packed, constant, everyday thing, then. You know, I would see no issue with it. Obviously I trust Mike's judgment. They've looked at this in, in full and I've got no issue with it, so. Just some things that were on my mind that I wanted to express. That's all I've got, so. Any other comments, questions, anything else on letter M or? Was there anything else, counsel, that you wanted to pick out of the consent agenda here to discuss? So we're content with everything else?
I did, I stopped by Mean Machine on the way here just to talk to Rob about his tobacco permit and he's doing a lot of good things to ensure that there's. No future violations, so.
Uh, and I guess my only question of, okay, Mr. Adams to you specifically is your, the, the beer garden, that's still going to be kind of outside of the. Perimeter of the, the events as, as in past years.
Yeah, same spot.
Okay. Oh, that's all I've got. Counsel, if you're good with it, we can pack it back up and we can move on with it.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Forger, Edler, Schaefer, Campbell, Fordice. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it. Uh, on to number ten then, business items. Let's start with letter A, uh, point member to Parks and Rec Board.
So we had one person apply, um, her application is included in her packet. She does not currently live within city limits, but she is moving to town in June.
Thank you, gentlemen. Have a great night. Sorry, Katie.
You would like to appoint her, uh, you, you may appoint her contingent upon her move in. And she can start serving on the board once she lives in city limits.
What is the date of the next parks meeting? Should have had that handy. I apologize.
Right. June tenth.
Okay. Do we know when she will be moving in in June?
She just said June. No.
Want to possibly approve her starting in July, then intended her June move in?
That would make, that would be appropriate, I think, just because, um.
Uh, your decision, obviously, counsel, would just. Suggestion.
I just say approve.
I'd say we really didn't discuss anything at the parks meeting about it because at that point in time, I don't think we knew that we had. So it's nothing that was discussed at all.
I mean, if you guys want to leave it, leave it vacant for another month, you sure can, but, um, I don't see.
We just start the term on July third.
Yeah, yeah.
Fine with that then.
Good to do the honors then?
Motion to approve the, well, one second. Yeah. To appoint Brianna Hankey to the Parks Recreation Board, term to start on July first, twenty twenty five.
Forger, Edler, Schaefer, Campbell, Fordice. Thank you, Mary. Uh, ten D, first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty five dash four and ordinance amending the code of ordinances. Of the city of Elkhart, Iowa by amending provisions in chapter fifty five, animal protection and control, section fifty five dot two, zero, number of animals.
So this is, um, the gal that came to our meeting last month and had a request for six chickens. This is kind of going off of, um, that as we discussed, we wanted to amend our code. Um, I did some research and the majority of cities that allow chickens. Iowa, they do allow up to six. That's a very, the most common number I found. Um, and so this new draft includes that six chickens would be permitted within city limits. And then it also specifies that, um, dogs and cats are not included within that six, that, that number.
Who would be allowing for dogs and cats, right?
Yep, or a combination of the two, yes.
Specify hints, not roosters.
Correct, yes.
Um, my apologies that I didn't properly do my homework and that's what I meant to and completely spaced on it. What are the requirements? Do we have them? As we're deciding, we know off the top of the head, what are the requirements that we currently have for, for chickens as far as for keeping them, housing them?
There's no like application, there's no, I remember when I got chickens, I think they weren't allowing chickens at that point and I had to. Call an occupation and request to have chickens in general, but I don't think they do that anymore because people have chickens.
But they're not required to be like fenced in or in an enclosure or.
I think anybody way back a thousand years ago, when I petitioned to have mine, I just put in my write-up. Very similar to what Megan did when she was, she submitted her stuff a month ago, like the intention of this is where I plan on putting them. This is what I plan on doing. So I think the people that. That want them, do their homework and know what their, their intention is. Um, it's not. My historical understanding of people with chickens is it tends not to be a spur of the moment decision sort of thing, so.
And I haven't really seen any loose chickens or anything. I had one loose chicken that ended up at our house and we put it in ours and found it was rooster and then we gave it to. A guy outside of town because I wasn't eating.
Did it come from across the road?
I don't know where it came from, but.
Thank you.
Hey, that was, I got. Funny, funny.
I know some of you may be farming something else, you know, no water on it, but. Rooster needs to visit the chickens once in a while where you don't lay eggs.
Um, I haven't found that to be the case for ours. Um, they tend to lay for about four years and then most chickens, uh, kind of just slowly.
The way it is. And the second thing, you cannot put bedding or the manure in the garbage.
Right.
And that can come back to bite the city.
No, Katie, I appreciated, um, you knew this was kind of a passion project of mine and, and your homework all fell in line with everything I had seen too. Um, we obviously don't need to be crazy like Des Moines and allow roosters and twenty five chickens or whatever their number is. It's insane. Um, but this feels in line with everyone around us is doing. And it also, I think, speaks to the type of community that you seek to be with that agricultural relationship. Um, Megan did a great job with her homework too. She was more than happy to come tonight if we needed her to. And I said, I think, I think we got it. I think we're good, but. Um, I think this is a, a step in the right direction for us.
Do you think we need to specify no roosters and?
And if there is a rooster, you have to call animal. Polk County was who we contract for animal control and that would be who would have to go take care of it if you need.
Gave someone outside of town, the rooster, is that okay?
I meant if you know of someone or somebody listening knows of someone and they want to do something about it, we always talk about what's a good, what's the use of having a code or an ordinance? It's unenforceable. They're the ones who enforce it.
Well, I think whoever had the rooster realized it was a rooster and just let it out of their yard and that's.
Just chickens. This is not general free, so not ducks or, um, guinea fowl or any crazy business like that.
Do we feel we, in light of, um, what Mr. Adams presented, which is a fair point? Do we feel we need to add anything as far as specifying, uh, I'll say byproducts of said chickens and. Making sure it's disposed of properly or are we content with how it's worded?
That's listed as, um, and can you sanitation would have that in there. Rules is they govern what goes in their trash can, so.
Yeah.
They have that list on their website.
Get for the ones to hold them in the city dumpster.
If you see something, say something.
I have.
Polk County sheriffs be helpful there.
Counsel, your decision. I'll be quiet at this point.
It's good the way it is.
Yeah.
Okay, then take it away.
Motion to approve, I got, I lost my spot. Ordinance twenty twenty five dash four. The motion amending the code of ordinances with the city of Elkhart, amending provisions in chapter fifty five, animal protection and control, section fifty five two. Number of animals.
Forger, Edler, Schaefer, Campbell, Fordice. Letter C, first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty five dash five and ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Elkhart, Iowa by amending provisions in chapter one oh seven. Collection of recyclable materials, section one oh seven dot oh four, collection of fees.
So we received notice from Metro Waste that they're increasing the residential rate. And so based off of our discussion last year, um, I rewrote the ordinance with the. With basically matching their rate is what we would charge. And this would go into effect for July water bills. And that is when their rates are increasing as well.
Questions, comments? Take it away.
Don't we have to waive the second and third reading to adopt an ordinance?
No, uh, if that's what you guys want to do. That's up to you guys.
So like going back to what we just did, that was just the first reading out the adoption.
Yes, this would just be the first reading to approve the first reading. And then if you guys wanted to waive the second and third, that's, that's up to you guys.
Maybe just read the second one and then waive the third one. Then we can do it on both chickens and the recyclable material.
If you guys want.
I mean, we're all here now.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we already passed by the chicken.
Chickens is, the chicken has flown. Oh, hopefully not, they have, but.
No, they're better.
Yes. So yeah, moving on from the chickens, for the, for the recycling fees. If you guys want to do the first reading and then waive the second and third now, we can do that. That's up to you guys.
I think that's appropriate. Well, that's getting complicated with all the words.
So, all right. So we wrote the first one, so, so motion to waive the second, third reading of ordinance. So motion to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty five dash five.
Second.
Forger, Edler, Schaefer, Campbell, Fordice. Now.
Motion to waive the second, third reading of ordinance twenty twenty five dash five.
Second it.
Forger, Edler, Schaefer, Campbell, Fordice. Deb, are you caught up?
Motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty five dash.
Motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty five dash five, correct.
Foraker, Edler, Schaefer, Campbell, Fordice. Okay, resolution, uh, letter D, resolution twenty twenty five dash three two, resolution to approve twenty twenty five street rehabilitation project and cost.
Okay, so um, Ron, we annually, we budget fifty thousand dollars to do street repairs. Um, last year we focused on the highway and so this year, Ron is looking, I think he talked to Brad a little bit. And we're looking at repairing some areas within city limits in town. Uh, my memo listed out all the different areas that were included in the bids. Um, he gathered two bids and um, the lowest bid came in uh, from Enroads and they did our repairs last year as well, they were great to work with. Um, but that is what we're suggesting uh, to approve tonight to move forward and do those repairs in either later this month or June.
Other thing about Enroads too is remember that sinkhole that was at Onclant? They're also gonna fix, Enroads has the technology, has the um, equipment to build and repair that as well.
Okay.
So.
My question on the map that was submitted, the area in front of the water treatment, wasn't that part of the area that's gonna be paid for by the construction? They wore that down. Part of the actual, I wish Forest was still here, but yeah. I feel like that was part of that. Part of the retainage fee was for them to fix.
That rings a bell.
And I saw that on this map and I went, I don't think we should be using our budget for that until we clarify that, maybe you guys already talked about it, but I'm I'm pretty sure it was.
I can check with them and if.
Cause it needs to be fixed, but that was part of our original bid for the water treatment.
Would we just approve this thing with a not to exceed this but this um, quoted amount and then we can, that could be removed from the total if needed.
Cause it has to be approved tonight, right?
For them to start, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the amount then could include, if we cut the amount, did they take the hypothetical number, whatever that is for this area that they had budgeted in the quote and apply it to a different area that needs attention? Because then if we keep it at the not to exceed, they could do that, I'm pretty sure.
And then if there is anything left over, uh, Ron said that he has uh, patching stuff that he can use around town, that's
Okay.
Good patchwork.
Or maybe this will take care of that once we get, cause actually in this area, I think was even when we talked about the original plant was expanded all the way to the corner. I don't think it was just supposed to be right out in front of the plant because they were doing some work down here as well, so.
Okay.
Just that why.
That does ring a bell.
Yeah.
No, good catch, thank you.
So, motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash three two, not to exceed the project cost of fifty thousand dollars. Second. With Enroads.
Uh, the, what the exact amount will be forty-five, six twenty-two, I believe here.
Our budget's the.
Or uh, no.
Fifty-four for this year.
Nope, you're correct, I'm sorry. No, don't mind me. Second, second, thank you, Foraker, Edler, Schaefer, Campbell, Fordice. And then on to letter E, excuse me, resolution twenty twenty five dash three three, a resolution approving professional services agreements with Snyder and Associates for the Elkhart twenty forty-five comprehensive plan.
Yeah, so um, our comprehensive committee met and we received five proposals um, from our RFP. Uh, we were very pleased with the results that um, you know, all the proposals we received were very professional, well-written, and great experience. In the end, we did compare cost, um, the quantity of deliverables that were in the proposal. Um, and we looked at the team that um, would be assisting with the project and we are recommending Snyder and Associates to complete our comprehensive plan update. Um, and that is what's on your agenda, their contract is included. Um, I don't have a chance to look over it all, uh, but it just kind of outlines um, the timeline for the project, it would uh, take about twelve months.
When we meant to discuss it, one of the things that I think set them apart was the amount of community involvement. And I was very impressed with their willingness to conduct different groups, different meetings, input panels, uh, online surveys, things of that nature and not just including, not just saying, hey, there's a QR code, fill something out, but willingness to host meetings and bring people to the community center and get out there and beat the streets as well and and talk to the entire community, not just the technologically enabled part of the community. Um, on top of that, you can go to their reference sheet and look at the years of experience that they've had putting these together, Polk City has had a wonderful experience working with them and we're just at the point where our comprehensive plan, um, you know, the the city has grown so much since it was put together and this will give direction, you know. Scott Ray was talking a little bit ago about starting to get new um, ways to inventory essentially and and look at different training needs and look at different testing and things like that and that's gonna be part of our capital equipment plan and what we need to know comprehensive plan before we can know a capital equipment plan and work together with the fire department, so this is just another step in that process of looking forward, um, Snyder and Associates, uh, their bid was really, really strong. There was another one that was a close second, Angie, um, since we went through that, but at the end of the day, the amount of things that we got um, far exceeded the competitors when it came to a lot of the competitors line item stuff out, so if we wanted community involvement, it was an extra eight hundred and sixty dollars to host a meeting. Or if we wanted this, it was an extra twelve hundred and forty dollars, Snyder rolled all that in and was still less than most of the other ones, but had more overall experience in the area, so we're pretty, pretty excited by it.
We also intentionally wanted to look at working with someone that we haven't worked with in the past, uh, part of the fear being, uh, there was like general vibe that potentially, uh, the people that had helped us in the past with comprehensive plans would just recycle a lot of the information. Uh, we really wanted something new, different, fresh eyes on it and these guys really work great, we, yeah, we narrowed it down from the five to the two pretty quickly, uh, and hemmed it hot on the two, Katie grabbed some more information on them. I, I think this is a great option for us, I'm excited about it.
No, and thank you guys for being there to go through that, my apologies, I was not able to attend that meeting, but planting in the north country, so. Um, no, I've gone through all of them as well, I agree with that. Um, that's why I didn't tell you guys what my thoughts were, I wanted to hear what you guys have to say, so, uh, but I would agree with that as well. Yeah, if there's nothing else, any questions, comments? To approve resolution twenty, oh, hold on one second, Mr. Capos.
My question or my concern is, is why the city is going to go out and spend. I don't know what the amount is, I assume it's in the thousands. For this, when the comprehensive plan we have right now is only six years old. We've gone through this cycle so many times, they go out, they get a comprehensive plan done. We get it, everybody's, oh yeah, we're gonna implement this, it gets put on a shelf. And several years down the road, everybody's like, oh, we need a new comprehensive plan. So they go through it again, they get it, it gets put on a shelf and a number of years down the road, we recycle the same thing over and over. You've got one right now that's, like I say, six years old, I just went in and looked to see what date we did it. Because I wasn't sure, but I knew it was not that old. First of all, I'm wondering how many people in the council have even looked at what's there now? I've read it, it's been quite a while, I have read it. Um, you know, I don't know if you've read it, if you haven't. But I'm thinking, you know, are we trying to reinvent the wheel or should we just take the wheel we've got and adapt it?
I think so, maybe we have a, I think six years ago, there was different goals for town than there is now, we have a new council, we have a new city and I think we, we've worked really hard on putting together a plan we want to see for the future and I think maybe that's why we're doing it now.
Do we know that the one we've got now won't do what you're wanting to do?
Yeah, yeah, to answer, first off, thanks for bringing that up, we did discuss that when we were sitting there that day. One of the things we talked about was the size and the scope of it, at the time, future land use stuff, the annexations of Ankeny that are coming this direction, what direction the city needs to grow, wants to grow. A lot of annexation conversations, as you know, we we talked about it at P and Z last week about, well, are we gonna get landlocked, are we gonna get surrounded, what direction do we want to go and so just in conversations about the existing comprehensive plan, there's nobody left over from when the twenty nineteen comprehensive plan was put together. So going backwards, we had Snyder and we had the different firms actually look at the plan and a few of them shot us estimates on just updating the existing plan. And what we felt is, is the population turnover since twenty nineteen, we've grown roughly twenty-seven percent a year since then. So there's roughly a hundred and forty to a hundred and seventy more people in town now than there was according to that. It's probably, go by water bills, maybe double or triple that almost, so we've had such a large growth by then that there's, there's way more voices than there was before. So just going back and looking at something and updating it, we felt it was appropriate at this time with the bids and the the money that we had available to go ahead and get a new plan. Now, they will use some of the twenty nineteen data, they they can look at the future or past plans to to put future stuff in place, Mike, but what we didn't have back then was stability at city hall, we didn't have tenured employees, we didn't have um, a lot of the stuff that we have in place now, the budgets were not in place, the the financial side of this city hall wasn't in place. So with all due respect, we we thought of that and and maybe my answer isn't good enough for you and that's fine too, we don't always have to agree on everything, but no, I I I do believe it's personally, and talking with Katie and talking with Angie, it is the right time to go ahead and redo it and move forward with something that encompasses more voices and the future needs of a growing city. At the time, my my honest im- uh, impression of the twenty nineteen comprehensive plan is that it wasn't really looking I guess as optimistically at the future as that I would have liked to do, it didn't see a lot of the growth that was coming, it was used to spec out some of the projects that were done that were ended up not being scoped and sized large enough, so I don't have every uh, single line in there memorized by any means, I'm not standing here pretending like I do, but we have looked through it and the twenty twenty-one or two-ish council, we talked about using some of those things. We developed some of our resolutions off of those plans, but at the end of the day, it's, it's, we're just in a way different spot in my opinion.
Concerns understood, concerns noted, and and I I agree with you. But I also agree with what Mr. Fordice just said as well, and he, I think he phrased it perfectly, is that my opinion is respectfully, we've got a much different motivated council now, again, city staff to echo what Mr. Fordice said as well. Agree with your concerns and understand them, but I think if we're going to uh, reinvent the wheel, to use your phrase, I think this is a great time to do it based off of the assets we currently have.
And there's no guarantee that we don't all get voted out in the next two to four years and then the next council comes in and wants to redo it all again either, but at the same time, what we're hoping to do is put something in place that is stackable in the future as opposed to a plan that says, well, this is the comprehensive plan, but then it misses the mark in so many different ways because maybe it didn't incorporate what it needed to, so I we we did not choose to move forward with the previous um, group that put it together, we chose instead to go with a different organization that had better planning and better future experience and bold and make the.
Well, I did, one of the reasons I was really happy to be on the steering committee was I worked with the nineteen plan and I have a copy of it in my house, actually, uh, and so I try to approach everything as physically responsible as possible and to your point, I hate redoing projects, especially when I feel like they were done well last time and I think that plan was done well, when it was done, uh, I just think that was a whole, a whole different group and we're headed a different direction and so as much as I hate respending money, um, I do think that plan was dated enough, it was gonna be hard to update it to where we wanted it to be. And I'm excited about the possibility of having fresh eyes on where we're headed. Um, and I hope that some of us are still around to to continue to see it through, cause that's my intention, but no, I did have some reservations and that's why I tried really hard to get myself in a position where if I felt like we were headed down a path that didn't make sense that I could be a voice in that, but at this point, at every opportunity, it's it's made sense to go ahead and move forward, in my opinion.
Counsel, any other comments? Yes, Mr. Adams.
Excuse me, uh, up until I think twenty nineteen, Elkhart never paid for their comprehensive plan. Mike might be able to cover that in there, we always got an Iowa State student that needed something to do so they would come in, the class would put their heads together, they'd come down and do it, didn't cost City of Elkhart any.
Wonder if they're still doing that, you know?
I'd have to check with them and find out, they've always got students to do stuff.
There are opportunities that exist, but they did not equal, in our opinion, the professional scope and capabilities of Snyder and Associates.
But that's where the professionals come from.
Eventually, the training, the gal that's leading it has over twenty years of experience. Yeah, sometimes you get what you pay for and and there's a reason why a lot of the plans that we'd had and a lot of the stuff that was scoped wasn't made big enough and now we're cleaning up and fixing and redoing and rehashing, I'd love to avoid that this time and by using a more professional outfit, I think Iowa State students also did, it wasn't a comprehensive plan, but it was that Main Street plan project.
Well, the transportation.
Transportation plan and things like that.
Sidewalks and.
Which we still cite. Correct, yeah, it's great engineering, go sidewalks, but yes.
No, points noted, counsel, it's it's ultimately up to you.
Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash three two.
Can I second it?
Foraker, Edler, Schaefer, Campbell, Fordice. Alright, on to number eleven, discussion items, uh, uh, gas and electric franchise fees.
Yes.
Letter A.
So, provided some more information, just, I didn't know if you wanted to continue discussing, considering what your thoughts were, if you wanted more information, um, I just think with the way property tax reform is being discussed, that we should really take a hard look at implementing franchise fees. Ultimately, it's your guys' decision, um, if we did one percent, it would have no effect on residents, it would be a wash. Um, but I don't know if you guys saw the email from the Mid-American franchise manager, he kind of helped explain in depth how it would look, what it is, um. If I can provide anything else that you're wanting, I'm happy to. I just wanted to kind of bring this up again and see what your thoughts were.
And the state didn't pass anything this session because they did like what, three revisions?
They did not, they they came out with three different bills, uh, proposing for property tax bills. Um, they, they did listen to their constituents and the result is that more time is needed to craft this new bill that they're talking about. Uh, so it's, it's continuing still, it'll, they'll be working on it throughout the summer, I'm sure. But their, their goal is to bring it up in the twenty twenty-six session, so.
So I, I asked a lot of questions about this to Katie and prompted to me Mills to Mid-American and the boiled down version of the way I understand it is you had that sample bill pulled up from Mid-American, if you scroll down to the bottom, it says one percent lost local option sales tax, so every single time you get a Mid-American bill, the very last line item on it shows that a one percent or whatever it is, it says local option sales tax at the bottom, so if we implemented the franchise fee, we would not collect the local, local option sales taxed from that. Instead, it would just be uh, an additional fee on top of it, either one, two or three percent, depending on how aggressively we wanted to go and the idea behind it isn't to charge people more money to live here, the idea behind it is to find a way to raise more revenue for the city without raising property taxes. So the immediacy of it, um, the urgency of it isn't necessarily like we don't have to approve anything tonight, it's just a future discussion because as we look at the House file uh, that they had been discussing and we look at the different caps, there's definitely property tax reform coming, um, and where we're at, growing city, infrastructure needs, there has to be additional ways to raise some funding without penalizing and and raising property taxes, because even a slight raise in property tax, if you're looking at calculations, is quite a bit more than one or two percent on on a franchise fee. Plus then it also, it, I think the word taxes isn't correct, but it charges the users of the larger homes, the the newer people in town pay just as much as, you get the point, right, like you're paying for what you use, your one percent might be higher if your electric bill's a hundred and fifty dollars versus forty dollars. Uh, whereas when you raise property taxes, you're raising property taxes on every single person that's lived here and now those people feel like they're paying for getting the bulk of the, what we're paying for all the new growth, how come all the new growth? This would be a way to to have people pay. My way of boiling it down is kind of your fair share, you know, if you're using, if you're using more of it, you're paying for more of it versus having the rest of the city have to raise what they're paying for property taxes, so we kept the tax levy for property taxes the same again this year as we did last year. This would be a way to continue to keep that flat hopefully or even have reductions in the future, assuming there's no drastic changes from the state level or cap because if the two percent property tax kicks in, then we're gonna be chasing our tail, two, three, four years from now or sooner, uh, and water bills are gonna have to increase and everything's gonna go up all at once and it's going to be a stark rise and that's not fair to anybody. We all live here, we all pay these. And it's going to be a stark rise and that's not fair to anybody. We all live here, we all pay these bills, so. That's my two cents on it. But there's definitely time to discover more about it or. Katie's, I've bugged her enough times and she's fired off enough emails to try to answer my questions, so I appreciate that.
When I soap boxed about this, I think when it came up the first time, because with the state stuff, the conversation then, uh, you know, we knew we're gonna have to do something. And what I appreciate about this option is, to your point, we have the, we have a way of doing it that it doesn't even change anybody's bill, it just shifts things. Uh, I think that's important and I do think uh taxes is a dirty word for a lot of people. And so they don't necessarily always have an understanding of, you know, what. Rules are put on us as far as what we can and can't collect and can and can't do with that and all of those things. Uh, so just coming up with something separate and aside that we know is gonna come in, uh. They're going to pass something, they're, they're working on it. Um, it would be foolish of us to sit and wait, in my opinion.
And I kind of listed out, I know you had mentioned what could we use this for, you know, what are we gonna establish? We're required to have a revenue purpose statement if we pass something for franchise fees. And so just a few things I kind of thought about, you know, one main, one main. Purpose that a lot of cities use is for the direct property tax relief, mentioning in Iowa code for franchise fees and then another one. Um, you know, street repairs, as we continue to grow, we're gonna be liable for a lot more streets. And so that's, you know, a way we could designate those funds towards street maintenance. Um, another one is public safety with our ambulance contract with Ankeny that is increasing. Crazy amount for next year, you know, we can designate it towards public safety funds.
And just to get that out, this is three hundred and thirty percent increase from eleven thousand three seventy seven to forty eight thousand nine ninety six.
Yep.
Just to make that.
And that's just an example of city, you know, Ankeny's.
The, the city is being asked to pay for more now, which means we're all being asked to pay for. So instead of having to cut something drastic from another area, franchise fees are a way to, to keep that without taxing everybody now.
But it's hitting all cities. I mean, Ankeny's come into me saying, we need to, we need you guys to pay more so we can continue to provide the service and. It's, yeah, unfortunately, it's, we're just trying to diversify and come up with. Different way to bring it on.
And the, the change in the county's lost form, the two, if we did change this, it wouldn't impact the school in a negative way or anything like that. So I know, you know, we talk about lost, we're talking about school, we're talking about TIF, we're talking, this doesn't change it, no impact any of that, so. So really what the main question is, it's one percent would be just a flat wash of what's there, it wouldn't really do anything. But if we did two percent and then an additional percent in the future or additional two percent in the future or something like that, it would be a, it would be a slight increase up. So one percent of every hundred dollars is essentially what we're talking about, that's that basic. They didn't do overly simplifying, but.
Counsel, no questions, input, thoughts? I do appreciate the sample bills, yes.
Oh, yes. They're very helpful. Yeah, many of them has been great to work with.
I mean, ultimately, at the end of the day, what is the end user gonna see? How does it affect them? That's. Because that's the people who are gonna be making the phone calls saying, hey, what's going on with this and.
It would add about a dollar twenty eight per, per eight hundred and twenty eight dollars if that's the sample bill, so two dollars. Would it, you're not gonna go from zero percent to two percent because you're already paying one percent as well. Each jump up.
Obviously no action that I'm on this night, I, I think it'd be safe that. You guys are okay with it, you know, continue to move forward on it and, or if you guys think we need more information or it's up to you guys, but. From everything I've seen, from everything I've heard, it, it makes sense. I think it's better overall.
And anytime we talk about raising anything, we also talk about the fiscal responsibility side and, you know, Katie and Deb's work to. Generate interest on all of our funds that equal up to thousands of dollars in revenue for the city every month. Things like that are helpful and I know they're continuing to bust their butts every single day to continue to find grants to pay for things and find other ways to pay for stuff. This isn't passing any extra costs on to the, to the people in town who pay bills is never our first goal. It's, it's always looking at ways to reduce what we're spending. Um, we have no major fiscal proj- projects for the year, you know, for fiscal year twenty six, there's no major expenditures coming up this year. We're getting the deficits cleaned up, didn't have to raise property taxes. I know this sounds kind of like a stumping speech or something, but. This isn't just about how can we find an additional one or two percent. This is about how do we continue to protect the future, continue to grow properly, continue to control that growth that we always talk about.
Yep.
So that we're not in a position where we're cutting staff or we're cutting city programs or we're closing parks or we're not putting security cameras or we can't pay to get the lights fixed or things like that.
I don't think it's stumping, it's literally just giving people information, now whether they watch the video or not, we can't control that. Getting the information out there so they understand what this is all about.
All these sample bills, all this is public information, if anybody wants it, reach out to City Hall, you can take a look at it, it's in the council pack as well, so.
Which to that point, for those who do attend and sit in and all that, thank you, we appreciate that. Well, what's, one of the goals of doing this is wanting to make sure that the information's there, getting it out as many ways as we possibly can get it out to you. Whether or not folks seek it is up to them, but.
It's there.
It's there, so.
And timestamped.
Yes, for your convenience. And, and plug, so. If nothing else, we can move on then. Nothing else? Okay, on number twelve then, uh, reports of elected officials, city staff and standing committees. Rob, we'll start with you and work away around as always.
All right, um, Oak County Emergencies and Management Quarterly Meeting is coming up on Wednesday, I'll be attending that. Um, a little bit that did come out over the weekend is uh, one thing the legislature did do was. Vote and uh. Allowing the state basically to come back to the counties to take the nine one one funds. But not allowing the counties to increase the amount that they bring in on the nine one one fund from the cell phone bills and things like that. So basically putting the counties in a bind as to how they can continue to. Um, operate at the same level and at the call centers, um, dispatch and all of that. So hopefully we'll have a little bit more information uh on Wednesday after they've had a little bit of chance to discuss that. Um, the main hope is that uh Governor Reynolds would line item veto that particular item out of the budget. Since legislature is done for the term.
Questions, anybody? Yep, on to you.
Um, Midwest Waste Authority um had the financial meeting, um, just, just going over a bunch of numbers for the budget. Um, but they have not met for their regular meeting, that's not till this Wednesday, so I don't have anything to report for them right now. Um, I did meet with cemetery board last week for the first time, it was a great meeting, we talked about a lot of things, um. Their memorial service is coming up. Next Monday, next Monday, we come today, at nine thirty, um, which is gonna be a nice service. Um, they talked about how to get new members, they'd like to, you know, add new members to the board if anybody is interested in. Cemetery board, um, let us know, they're, they can use the help to um. Get things set up for the future. Uh, we did talk about they were interested in putting new burial sites on the east side of the cemetery where the grassy area is. Um, I, and they set about sixty spaces for parking too, but I don't think we're gonna be able to get sixty spaces even if we have the number of. Plots out there. I remember talking about in the past, um, they thought maybe there's a tile that runs through there that if. They put caskets and stuff in there that they're gonna float, um, and that's my concern, I feel like. We need to, if they think we can just go out and, you know, go ahead and just put these spaces in tomorrow, um, I don't think. That's a good idea, I think we need to have an engineer look at it and actually plan in it, I don't think we can put anything there in my opinion, but I absolutely don't know that. I need somebody to tell us that it can be done or not then. So, um, they're really interested in getting those more, more spaces out there, they only have probably less than ten spaces available. Right now, so, um, they're working on that, um, they've got two cleanup days, the next one is September twenty seventh, so if you. Have any flowers out there that you don't want cleaned out, please remove them and then bring them back out if they're still good. Um. I think that was, oh, oh, the veterans pictures, we do know where the veterans pictures are. And um their main concern was they really wanted to identify who those veterans were. Um, we were gonna meet at the community center and try to send out pictures on Facebook, do you know who these people are? Um, but they've already been, sounds like they've already been identified, so we don't really need to do that. We talked about maybe putting some lighter, putting in lighter frames, reframing them so they can hang back on the walls in here. Um, if we do that, I'd like to pick like one area that those can all be, so we don't take up. All of the walls in the community center, just for, you know, they run a place out and they, they've done stuff like that. So I think that's all I have on that.
No, I know that that's, that was awesome news when we found out that we had, had finally located those and everything was good.
Yep, they've been missing for quite a while.
I know the one, one of the concerns that, that probably works has as far as, I wanna see them back on the walls in here too, I think it'd be extremely appropriate, but I know they're concerned about. How and where and so we'd have to make sure that either we, do we have to tear a wall out, do we have to reinforce it, do we have to, then we can make sure that we.
Figure something out for the future so we can have them up, but it needs to be, I don't know if that's e-sols, I don't know if that's, you know, plastic. Frames, we pick a wall, put them on that wall, I don't know if we display them differently, but um, we need to look in the future on how we can do.
And I hate to keep moving them around or messing with them and put them in like a, a temporary display, if you will, that is appropriate to hang on a thinner wall versus, you know. X years down the road, new community center, bigger area, we can put them in a bigger frame or a cage or shadow, but whatever.
Yeah, I just wish we had a bigger area, we could, we can put them in, you know, just have something really nice, but we just don't have that at this time.
And, yeah, I'd love them on display, but it's just a matter of their, their safety, so.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. And that's all I got with cemetery board.
In terms of the cemetery plots and doing, I know we had the GIS software that was purchased and used. And there's some questions about feasibility and how that all worked out, but if they're looking at doing something serious with that, we probably have to talk to. B and K or somebody about.
Yeah, and I mentioned that, I don't think.
And that, I don't know from a budgeting standpoint, what that'll cost to even have them work that up and if that's this year, but maybe, maybe it's on the agenda for next year.
Yes, I know that's been a, a long delay since the last meeting I attended back in November.
Chip mentioned that they had a bid for like four hundred thousand dollars, but I don't, I remember of a bid, but I remember someone. Going out there at one point, checking it out and they're like, no, this area is gonna flood, there's no way you can put anything over there. And I, I agree with that, there's a tile that runs right through there, I don't know how they could possibly, but if that's the case, they would have to ask for more land for more spots. And I've been told that's not a possibility, so.
None to you ask.
Well, Chip said they could only.
And they don't pay just Chip, because his sisters don't like him.
Oh, well, he said his sister won't donate because she, their family wanted all flat stones over there and they didn't get it, so they would not donate to us again.
Oh, that's weird, straight from the sister, don't.
But I would like.
Civil feuds aside, civil feuds aside, they, they silly or not, uh, you know, we. Let's look at getting, you know, maybe the right people to ask the right questions and see what all options we do have, if the east is not an option, if we have to go another direction. Then let's talk to who we need to talk to and, you know, see what we can do to make that happen, so.
Yeah.
Okay, Angie.
Uh, Parks, Matt, we have a representative from Parks here, so I don't wanna snuggle over her.
Yeah, well, thank you. Uh, yeah, so we met last Tuesday, um, the first order of business was we had a member. Uh, leave the committee and so they were secretary and we had to elect a new secretary. So thankfully Stephanie has uh accepted that nomination, so she started taking the minutes immediately. And uh, we appreciate that, of course. Um, we also had a vacancy, like was mentioned earlier, we didn't. Have any applications to review at the time, um, but I think I wanted to say that Brianna's. Application was very encouraging for me, I think that brings a good skill set and knowledge base to our committee. And that's gonna be exciting for us here. Let's see, uh, we also discussed a five hundred dollar donation that we got specifically earmarked for. Youth activities here, so the board came together with some ideas on how we might be able to accomplish using up that fund. Um, so we've listed out some things and um. Whether it's a scavenger hunt or bike safety, maybe again with the fire department, having some partnership there. Um, some of the other suggestions were to. Uh, what do I wanna call them, like skill-based kind of programming for older people, uh, older youth, like.
Babysitting.
Cooking, babysitting, yeah, thank you, things like that.
Safety courses, because we have ponds and maybe.
Mm-hmm, water safety courses, um, I mean, we did talk about a fishing derby when the uh. When the pier here, the, is all in, the docks all in, um.
You could tie those two together.
We could absolutely tie those two together, yeah.
Hopefully not literally at the same time.
So, um, our action after that meeting though was for everyone to go pick the one that they were most passionate about. And then come to our June meeting, um, with how we would implement those, so then we can have some. Formal plans put together that we can vote on and move forward with and, um, I'm excited to see that, because I think. Our part committee, the most impactful thing we can do with the funds that we have is recreational programs. So I'm excited to continue with that, um, we had a small update on the pier, we saw some designs that were, um, shared and. Were told that we should be bidding within a month, is that still accurate, Katie?
Yeah, that's the last update I received.
Okay.
Looks very nice.
It looks brilliant, that's exactly what we were looking for, the nice straightforward design.
Yeah.
Um, I am encouraged just from hearing that it's that far, we're completing some construction documents and then going out to bid soon. Just on the professional side, knowing that people are hungry for work right now, contractors are, so this is a good timeframe to go out for bid and we should give you a lot of competitive. Uh, quotes, so that's exciting. Um, there wasn't any updates on grants. Uh, I did have a question though on if the pickleball net, it has been purchased?
Oh, yeah.
Right?
We have it in possession and I believe the guys are working on getting the current poles out right now of the pavement.
There was a concern, there's no way to secure that, so no one walks off with it. So.
Yeah.
Because right now it's just pins.
Yeah.
That are holding it in, so.
Okay.
I wonder if there's such thing as like walking.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, I thought it was supposed to, I'll have to check on that.
Yeah, there's, there's something that Ron had mentioned where it wasn't secured, maybe the, the pins to raise and lower it.
Yeah.
No way to keep those pins from walking away.
Yeah.
So there was something that he was concerned about as far as that goes.
We maybe need another security camera grant?
Like we'll like monitor if someone wants to change it.
Yeah.
They'll contact City Hall and then adjust it.
Okay. That's fair, yeah.
Was contacted by somebody with Heidi that's looking to potentially make some donations to the ballpark. Potential title sponsorships and things like that, so just, I don't know if she's reached out to you yet or not, but I'll, I'll follow up with her, just FYI.
Yeah.
Because I noticed in the, I think it was the minutes that you designed someone from Parks to be kind of the liaison between AES and so just.
Yeah.
Letting you know that conversation took place and there could be some potential funding and then I know Major League Baseball has some grants as well. Uh, as we take a look at that, so.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I have been excited with the number of grants that we have accomplished, thank you Katie for making sure to reach out and do those. That's how we get things accomplished here, so that's great for us. And the, um, assigning a liaison to AES has worked really well, really positively. And so I'm excited to continue that, I don't know what to call it, like integration of the board and the city with AES, so. Yeah. Very exciting. What did I miss, Stephanie?
I said that felt like all of it.
Is there anything with uh, any back to school activities or is that still in, in? Being worked on, thought of?
Still, still worked on, thought of, um, I think that's all rolled into youth activities and how we can maybe come with a plan, so then we can make it actionable and. Move it forward faster.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. Anything from you specifically?
Uh, no. Okay, she hit all the high points on this, really excited, I agree with her, I think recreation is the way for us to go and, and. There's really easy things we can do, we talked a lot at the meeting about the low cost things that are high value, uh, back for kids and. So if we can come up with those right activities, if people have suggestions, let us know, um, but yeah, we'd love to do more recreating.
Yeah, if there's anything that you need from us, if there's anything I can personally do to help, please don't hesitate, so.
We would like you to teach children to drive.
Anything I can legally do.
You can on private property.
Anything, never mind, I'm. Moving on.
So the new plow truck is currently in the shop in Des Moines right now, it's getting the bed liner and the plow put on it just in time for summertime. Um, after the liner's done, Ron and Rick have the new toolboxes they'll put in there. Uh, one of the things that. Uh, one of the things that Ron and I talked about was there's a concern for how are we going to mow the ponds? Because we're, that contract's done with. So, two options really is that we, we get the equipment, which is probably going to be some kind of tracked equipment with a brush dog on the front of it, or we, uh, look at possibly, um, exploring the continuation of the contract that we don't have anymore. Now, my understanding, Kay, that came, that came with the pond or something like that, and we got it done.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not familiar with this.
So, yeah, so their, their last mow was this, was this last time, so from here on out, we have to come up with a solution on how to mow close down to the water. So really, again, look into a contract of somebody that has the equipment or look at the equipment ourselves. Uh, water treatment plant continues moving forward.
Flowing.
Yes, it's flowing, yeah. Um, the Prairie Point Park sign landscaping, uh, it sounds like under previous administration, it was under the impression that maybe some Girl Scouts were going to be taking care of it or something like that, and that-
Just the original.
Just the original planting, because part of the Girl Scout project was sustainability.
Okay.
Ends for someone else to carry it on.
So maybe we look into somebody else, that somebody else to carry that, um-
Yeah, maybe every year have any volunteers or something.
Like maybe some kind of advertisement for it, or somebody that's willing to take over it, the other thing, in my opinion, it's kind of here's the thing with all the, the park stuff, because we have such a nice park, but like kids are sitting there playing on it and tearing the bricks off, and so Ron and Rick are out there, uh, they just got done gluing a lot of the bricks back on around the sign.
Um, I'd like to interject one thing, uh, I had a, I was going to save it for my part, but you, since you touched on that, I had a citizen send me a photo on Saturday evening of kids, uh, at Prairie Point Park at the basketball hoops, on top of the basketball hoops, on the framework and on the backboards and everything, um, in a phrase, no, not a good idea, not safe, um, there's a very nice playground jungle room set up right behind that, that maybe we utilize instead of the basketball hoops themselves, so, um, just overall safety concerns there, I will forward that photo on to you if we want to do something with it or say, hey, this is not cool, or if we think that's appropriate or not, but worth mentioning here, so.
And that's what the cameras are for. That, that is what the cameras-
In lieu of having them now, yes.
You know, talking with Ron and Rick, there's a lot of people that are cleaning up after their dogs, a lot of motorized stuff, whether it's four-wheelers or dirt bikes that are tearing up. Honestly, it, it pisses me off that we spend so much money and time and effort in indoor parks and people just let the city be their playground, and I, I do agree that we have that there, uh, for the kids. Um, but there has to be some parent responsibility with this as well, because I'm, I'm very hesitant to move forward, uh, at least with my vote on, uh, improving the parks, uh, if we can't get a handle on what, on what our kids are, on how they're treating the park system, because we've lived here on and off since two thousand and fifteen, and we've never had park equipment or, or nice places, you know, for our kids to go, and it's very irritating just to see people do dumb stuff, damage things, because there's no parental supervision on them, so I'm going to get off that soapbox because it really drives me fricking crazy, but, so.
All four kids having fun as they should in the parks.
One hundred percent. Safely and, safely and not damaging things, you know, was it the, we had the, um, basketball court fence that was damaged by some kids that were climbing on it, it's just, just parents just be parents with the kids and make sure that they're not damaging things that we all share as a community. So.
Hey Brad, I've got a couple of contacts that we use for HO, mowing HOA ponds, I don't know if you'd be interested in that.
Yeah, because that's one of the, one of the solutions is looking at different contracts.
I'll just forward the information where Katie, if she uses it, she does, if she doesn't, she doesn't.
Okay, thank you.
Just want to be a good steward, for sure.
And we don't want to have to contract with the private security firms to monitor the parks.
There should be no need for that.
Correct. It's- I love the fact that we got that, the, the grant that this altering or presented to us, but it's, I'm just going to say it in my opinion personally, it's embarrassing that we even have to have or consider installing things based off of what we've had going on there in recent history, so.
There's a lot of parks that you've had.
I, I, I know not disagree, but in, you talk with people around here that, you know, our community specifically, fact that we need that, to me is, is upsetting, but that's just my opinion alone, so.
Also too, they've been doing a whole lot of, uh, filling in holes over in the parking lot with kids taking their dirt bikes out there and just-
Let her rip?
Yeah, and it's just not the place for it, so.
Frustration shared, so. Mr. Campbell, uh, Mr. Figueroa, Mr. Campbell, Mr. Fordice.
We've covered most of it between the P and Z stuff and the comprehensive plan stuff and all of that, I don't really have anything further to add.
How about that gas station?
Oh, yeah.
We're all thinking that I pick it, I just beat that.
It was in Katie's report, so talk with Mo, um, Friday. Just waiting on Banksman, paper, pa, paper pushers, pushing paper.
Mo did Mo though, so we appreciate that.
Yep, I talked to him, well Katie, I sent him a message, sent him a message last week, and they were able to get that a lot taken care of within two days of us requesting it. Taking care of it.
I know there's some other folks that we've reached out to as well, and waiting to hear back on that, so.
But as far as that goes, project is still planned to be completed by the end of the year, but it's in the hands of Banks and Banksman, but Banks faces. It's really, every time there's an update, it's like, well, we should hear something in the next two to three weeks, and then three weeks goes by and it's like, yep, it's good, it's this, it's that, and now we're waiting for this, and there's a federal something, and that's going to take another two to three weeks. So it's just, it's just waiting. It's not costing us any money, we're making revenue off of the taxes on it, it is what it is, we'll make a lot more revenue, have a gas station, but we wait, so that's the update.
Katie?
Yes, um, so a lot has been done at the water treatment plant, all of the main items are complete with a few outstanding, uh, but West Tech has reported, um, some great improvements with the ammonia removal, uh, but like Forrest mentioned, we don't have an exact timeline quite yet of when it will be at satisfactory level with the ammonia removal. Um, right now, they were discussing at our last progress meeting, um, running whether the plan is to run off of two tanks simultaneously, or off of one and then move to two in the future when it's needed. Um, so that's kind of still up in the air, we're figuring out what, what they want to do, how, how we want to configure it. Um, uh, another big exciting thing we had recently completed is our annual exam with our CPA firm. Um, I'm pretty excited about all the improvements that we have made, we haven't seen the actual draft report yet, but, um, he noted that we had a lot of things cleared up, um, in our report that have previously been mentioned. So thank you to Deb for, you know, coming in and going to work at, you know, clearing up some of that stuff. Um, so hopefully we'll have that report by next month for you guys to look at. Um, another quick item I just wanted to mention, I'm still looking at, um, noise ordinance, just trying to work with business owners, trying to work it, see what type of draft we can come up with that makes the most sense for the community. Um, so hoping to have that on the June agenda for our discussion.
So we are, we are working with business, local business owners to, with new ordinances and new things that we put in place to make sure it's a bit, fit for all?
Um, I emailed, yes, I've been in contact, I've been emailing them.
Okay, that, that's what I wanted to know.
The business owners that I, I, I knew were directly, you know, concerned with it, so I've been in contact with them, and anytime there's a draft presented to you guys, I'll send it to them. But, um, another, I haven't heard back on our Prairie Meadows grant applications yet. Um, yeah, so usually May, June is when they, they provide those. Um, Marissa's been doing a great job with accounts payable duties, that I think that's, um, been a great addition to kind of her role, and so very happy with what they are doing in the office and everything. Um, and still working towards their certifications, so.
Awesome, thank you. Deb?
Gosh, I think Katie covered it all for me.
Okay, Mike.
I was going to talk about the annual exam, but that's, she's covered that, so I feel we're good.
I, when we do have that on the agenda, I'd like to go over that, um, in June, when we, we get that on, to, to, to down and talk to that and discuss it at the meeting. As you mentioned, some stuff getting cleared up in the past, if you could provide, hit the highlights, if you could provide some transparency on that, we had, what, what are we petted with, because we've talked ad nauseam in the past, bug cleaning things up, and I think that exam would be a good example of the actual legwork that's gone to that, yeah.
Yep, exactly, hey, we've talked about it, here's what we've actually done.
Correct.
So, no, agreed.
Yes.
Well, I'm not kidding this time, Mike?
Hello.
Hi.
Um, yes, planning and zoning met last Monday night, uh, we did discuss the site plan for the Three Ts Clubhouse, which is baseball, not basketball, like I had in mind a week ago for some odd reason. Uh, and our recommendation was to approve what you did at this meeting. Uh, we also had a discussion regarding Ankeny is annexing a piece of ground down here along Northeast Thirty-Eighth Street, which is within two miles of the Alcott city limits, so Alcott is entitled to make comment on that, uh, you have the options, I believe, of either approving it or opposing it. In fact, actually, it's within a mile of our city limits by the time you look at it. Um, our discussion, uh, it is not within the current land use plan map of our comprehensive plan. So our feeling was that the city should just go ahead and approve it, we have really no plan to expand ourselves off in that direction. Uh, the city's response won't be needed until it goes to the, uh, state, uh, city development board, which will be another month or two, but, you know, the city will need to look at it at that, or to that, and adjust the response. Uh, we did have some other discussions about annexations and such, uh, but nothing that was action taken, so just to be aware, we're watching that, and, you know, we want to work with council regarding those kind of issues.
Okay, very good. Uh, not much for me, this go-around, um, only thing I wanted to say is there's, there's been some negativity floating around, especially with the next agenda item that we're going to discuss, and I understand that. Uh, I'm going to reuse one of Mike's phrases from earlier in the meeting, we're not doing anything to reinvent the wheel here, we're just getting the wheel moving again, so to speak, and pardon the pun. Um, nothing that I believe this council has done, or we've done, or anything is in a negative impact for the city as far as what we're doing, we're trying to do the best that we can, make the best decisions that we can to have the best possible impact and outcome, whatever phrasing you deem appropriate along those lines. Uh, we just want to make sure that we're doing everything we possibly can with community feedback involved. Um, that being said, as always, we continue to welcome appropriate feedback, we continue to welcome helpful comments and suggestions and everything. Um, we're not going to respond or react necessarily on Facebook as far as those comments, that can be, we put the information out there, but we're not going to get in a back and forth on that stuff. Folks are welcome to reach out to City Hall directly, they're welcome to send us emails, you can send us a Facebook message, I'm fine with that, and ladies at City Hall can take appropriate action on that and discuss or what have you, but, um, the phone still works, last I knew, so that's an option as well. Um, but we just want to make sure that, you know, the feedback that we do receive is appropriate, it's on task, and it's, it's, it's helpful, so. Um, you know, we want to make the best decisions with our votes and our voices, your votes, I suppose, and, and voices that we can, and we can only act off of what feedback we do receive and, and, and what we get, so, um, whatever you've got, we want to hear it, um, as long as it's appropriate and it's, and it's actually helpful, so that's, that's all I've got, end rant, so.
I have one other development that I, uh, wanted to share with everybody, because I don't know if everybody knows.
Breaking news from Jill, go ahead.
I talked to Katie, uh, Tim Butler had reached out to me, um, there was a time capsule buried on the east side of the shelter house in nineteen seventy-six, that's due to be opened in two thousand and twenty-six.
Okay.
And, um, I talked to Katie about it, and I talked to Andy Corey with the ECDC about it, and, um, Andy and I are going to work on having some kind of big event at the next, uh, city festival to open that and make it a big, make it a big deal, and-
I remember, I remember Andy has been mentioning something about that in the past, and I didn't want to say anything to spill the beans, or what, add on the bag, or whatever other clever analogy, but-
I actually wasn't aware of it, and Tim Butler had, had mentioned, you know, that Mary Herman had taken care, or had the information and was to pass it over when the time was right, and the sign was right, so.
That would be exciting, you know, that would be, that will be exciting, and then hopefully, uh, my suggestion would be we re-bury something and-
Hurry and replace it.
I, yeah, I, I think that would be-
Yeah, that could be something I could talk to Andy about.
I think that would be most appropriate, so.
Yeah, but I just want to share that, in case everybody didn't know that that was, even here.
No, excellent, thank you for that. Alrighty, if there's nothing else on the number thirteen, code enforcement, who wants to tell me why we're starting an HOA? Because that seems to be what people think that we're doing. Does anybody want to help me clarify that, as why that's not in fact the case?
Health and safety concerns were listed as a priority when we started this.
Yeah. I think everybody is just thinking like it's going to be like nickel and dime, they're going to be petty, and they're going to do this and that, and I don't think that's what it's going to be, it's not going to be what it's going to be, but I think they're feeling like, you know, it's just going to be out of control or something.
You know, they don't believe that, well, no, oh, go ahead.
I just want to throw out there the context, it's always important when we talk about they and everybody and words like that. Katie, how many, um, questions has City Hall received about the upcoming code enforcement from the letters that were mailed out a week and a half ago?
From the letters?
Yeah.
In general, or you guys?
Probably only three or four.
Three or four.
My grandpa had called me directly, and he's like, I got a violation, I said, no, you didn't get a violation, everybody received the letter.
So context, three people have reached out to City Hall directly with questions, not complaints necessarily, just questions, the Facebook comments and things like that, they've been directed to City Hall, and they haven't chosen to reach out to City Hall. At the end of the day, everyone has opinions, and there's nothing wrong with your opinion and sharing opinions. There's codes and ordinances in place, no, they're not all perfect. Um, we've been redoing them as they come up, we're going to find more that need to be redone. Their chicken ordinance, whatever, I'm trying to simplify it tonight, is an example that, that came up because somebody had a concern that there's going to be code violations that bring up concerns, and, and are they modern enough, are they things that we've considered? State law just got signed in last week that you can build a separate building on your property now, and things like that beginning in July, and so there's, there's a lot of things going on that are changing. But to say that anybody's reinventing anything, code enforcement has always been something that cities are tasked with doing when we're elected. Part of the reason why we're elected is to uphold the code, re, literally in our job description, in, in the city code, so it's concerns that were brought to us, it's concerns that have been brought to us, code enforcement, enforcement, uh, at a city hall level was, for lack of better terms, paused for eighteen months, because city staff didn't exist to do it. Uh, and we mentioned a little bit ago, the annual reports and things like that, we had more pertinent things, you know, there was city finances to get in order and, and things like that, so we're re, we're restarting the active enforcement, but we've always said, and we will continue to say, that it's a community-involved process, getting a letter in the mail doesn't mean anyone hates you. It doesn't mean you necessarily knew you were doing anything wrong. Um, but it's just information, and so at, at my request, I know Johnny was involved, Katie sent out an email to every single person that works for the city in any capacity, sits on any committees, whether it's Parks or P and Z or council, part of the fire department, anything, to let us know that we're the standard. So if our properties have code violations, we're going to get letters too, and we're going to need to get those cleaned up to set that example and to be part of that, um, because we can't enforce it if we don't enforce it. So I would expect that everybody up here, if those come up, there's, we have the exact same process that anybody else does, if we have any questions or, or ways to get it taken care of, but at the end of the day, we all live here, we all agreed to live here, and when you moved into the town, the town is governed by codes and ordinances. It's how it works, and somebody has to enforce those, it's not a money grab, we're probably going to cost the city money. Um, it's not something that we're doing to target anything specific or anyone specific, it's just in general, something that every city does, and we have to start doing it, it has nothing to do, I know you were joking about HOAs. It has nothing to do with wanted, um, wanted fights, it's not trying to be an HOA, it's saying these things have existed, some of them for longer than any of us have been alive, uh, and longer than some of the people have lived in this town, so we have to enforce them. And so we're beginning where we think it's best, we've let every single person know, either on Facebook, and now to every PO box of every property owner in town. Everybody is now made aware officially through mail, outside of sending certified mail, there is no other way to do it, Marissa busted her butt, I know you guys worked hard to stuff envelopes and get that out, because we wanted to let every single person know.
So you asked, yeah, part of why we've been doing this campaign, the education, or enforcement through education for the last six months, call it now, that we've been talking about this, that we've been having these discussions, so it doesn't catch anybody off guard, so it's not a culture shock, so it's not a, you know, we're just, we're getting this back up and going now that we are able to. able to with the staff that we have and Mr. Van Asdall that we've brought on board as well, so that nobody is caught off guard, so that here's what it is. We're not hiding anything. I hope nobody would ever think that. We're not trying to pull smoke and mirrors. We're not trying to, we're one of my biggest things is I want us to be as open and transparent as we possibly can be, and I feel that we've done a, I'm just gonna say, we've done a damn fine job with that so far. I hope we continue to do so. Well, I stand behind every decision that we've made, and the late, what you ladies have guided me to do is that I said, hey, we recommend this, we do this, but that I'm all for that. Council, you guys have done a great job as well, and this, it's a touchy subject for some, and and I acknowledge it, and yes, I was joking when I started off with, why are we starting an HOA? We are not starting an HOA. I understand it feels like that to some, but we're not. We're we're just, we're catching up, and this is the whole, we've the same phrase that you've said, that we've all said, is sometimes we're, we're catching up with everything that needs to be caught up, and then this is just another one. This is a big one based off of Mister Campbell, like you said, feedback that we've received and 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 issues and things, so.
Well, I think to Brad's point, when you move into a community, you choose to abide by the rules and the codes of that community. I grew up out in the country where we could do whatever we wanted, and then I chose to move my family into a community and abide by those rules. If no one's enforcing the rules, you start to get lax. You're like, well, no one cares. If I don't mow my lawn, I'll just leave it. Um, we are getting back in the habit of enforcing the rules that everyone around us expects us to follow, and you can't pick some rules and not other rules and all those things, and some people and not other people, which is why I do appreciate that the letters went out to all of us initially, uh, because we are holding ourselves to the same standard that we're holding everybody else to. We're not, we don't get special passes just because we're sitting here, so.
I think our properties, all of us, work numbers, et cetera, should be after we get the main things knocked out as far as, you know, get the ball rolling there. I think our property should be some of the first that are checked out and make sure.
Would expect him to drive by, and and the other thing I think is important for people to know is there's no like quota that we have to get a specific number of like dings every month, you know, he's, we're not looking to to catch people, to punish people, anything like that. Um, so don't worry, and it, yes, if you get a letter and 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 I can speak to this from the last time we had code enforcement going, I got a letter, I didn't realize that I, the brush pile was in the corner of my property, couldn't be there. Actually, the letter came to my neighbor instead of me, and it was on my property, so there was that, but I didn't know. I wasn't in trouble. I got the notification, hey, you can't have this, like, cool, we took care of it, like, and that was the end of it, like, it wasn't a big dirty thing. It's just following the rules is all it is. So yes, the the efforts on our part to get the rules out to people so they know what the codes are, the opportunities people have had to come and speak about the codes if they don't like them, um, the opportunities to reach out to the city that nobody's taken, uh, well, three people have taken advantage of. Like, we have literally done everything we can to make this as painless as possible. Um, you can't please everybody.
Yep.
We all are a community, and we agree to live here.
No, and as you know, from bringing up, tackle you, Mister Fordice, you know, there's several things in there that I I don't agree with the code, but as part of my being the mayor and as an elected official, I have to abide by them. You know, a specific example, and I've brought this up in the past, those, it's the trailer ordinance. It's not specific enough. It's it's very, very vague. And I'm not, no trailers at all. We've got a lot of fishermen in town. We've got avid, you know, hunters. We've got folks like that.
Business.
Businesses, so I'm I'm open to, you know, I'm not saying this is, this is the, you know, go ahead for it. I'm open to us re-looking at it at some point and hey, you're allowed to have them for X amount of days within a X amount of window or something like that, you know, something in the future, we more define it, but as it sits right now, as it stands, I gotta play by the rules too, so.
Code violation letter is the beginning of a conversation.
Bingo.
Yep.
It's not a condemnation of you as a person or your intentions. It's the beginning of a conversation between people who all live in the same place and are trying to work together and get on.
Coexist. Bingo. That's all I've got on it. I think that's all, about all we need on the council, unless you've got any other comments, or there's any brief questions.
Just to encourage anyone, so Johnny and I have talked about this at length as well. We're it's not six people sitting at a table starting code enforcement. It's community demand. This isn't something that we got bored and decided, hey, we should tax our city staff with code enforcement. We should spend hours talking about it. We should spend money lettering, sending out letters or responding to posts or posting things. This is community-driven demand, so we're doing what we're being asked to do, um, and you're not going to hear from the people that support it very often, um, but there are plenty that support it more privately than publicly, because they don't wanna get into back and forth on this, so. And neither do I. That's why I don't reply to any of that stuff anymore. But the positive support is, it's very overwhelming. That's why I wanted to point out that three people have reached out to City Hall with concerns.
Hey, every address in town. Mine wasn't a concern, it was just more of a question. Clarification.
What's that? Just, were you one of the three people?
I think he was.
Oh, nice.
I did not. I was contacted.
Gotcha. Yeah, yeah, yes. Yeah, no, questions are great. That's what we want.
Yep.
And that's how we find things to improve.
Yep.
There's no finality to this. It's not, it's written this way and it can never possibly change. It could be like, oh yeah, that's kinda dumb. We should talk about that. It's possible that that could happen quite a few times at the beginning.
Yep.
But there's also properties that were violated two and a half years ago, and they were given mitigation plans. They agreed to mitigation plans, and then they didn't adhere to the mitigation plans. So instead of just coming in and taking things and assessing things and going through the county and being jerks about it, we're gonna reopen those conversations and start those windows over and invite them back to talk about it, and cuz that's the intent of it. The intent isn't to penalize any.
Yep.
Please like and share and subscribe this video.
Counsel, anything else on that subject? Any other quick, quick questions, comments? Nope. Let's move on. Other business, number fourteen.
I had a question, uh, Mister Fordice, or not a question. You were right. I was sitting in on a meeting, like I have a lot of them. That street was included into the water project. There's no minutes on it because they did not believe in it at that time or do anything, but it was supposed to be in the contract.
Yeah.
Where there's got there. Mister Campbell, you and the dog going out to there, this is, you guys, a good thing you're, well, you might wanna sit down. You're gonna laugh into there. I witnessed this three times. Finally, I followed the one fella, and I followed the gal home. They come up on Main Street and park and walk their dog to do its duty on this side of town because this, pardon it, but it's a shit hole side of town, so it doesn't make any difference if their dog comes over here and goes.
Oh, that's lovely.
That is what two people told me that live west or east of Grant. And I followed a gentleman home, and I asked him in there, cuz I saw where the dog was at. I said, uh, did you know your dog, you're supposed to pick that up? And he had a couple of comments on it in there. And I said, well, I said, you know, that just shows really what type of human you are. I didn't say any more, I just drove off into there, but you can't teach the kids anything when the parents don't have any brains to start with. Into there, so that goes on all the time. Well, we don't wanna walk them in our neighborhood into there. Well, then you know what? Get rid of the dog. You know, if you don't wanna take care of it, it's no different letting the kid run. You gotta take care of it. In there, so that goes on a bunch. They hop in the car and drive over here. I don't know if you saw it or not, Jill, but they drive over here, allow them walking around, leave their cars up there, and then they hop in it, drive home. Honey, I'm gonna take care of the dog.
I see a lot of dogs come down Main Street, but I don't, I didn't per se see that.
I will say that we we walk our dogs around the entirety of town, and they're equal opportunity poopers.
Yeah.
And we do clean up accordingly, so.
The other thing, we were to have a letter sent out in January, I'll say. It was talked about, I think November, December, on how the new water plant is gonna work. Unless I've missed it, I haven't seen anything.
I don't know if we ever sent a date on it, but we had talked about it. The the go-live date kept getting moved back, but the funny thing is the original go-live date wasn't till June anyways, so.
I understand that, but I'm just saying.
We've been talking about it.
Get ahead of it a little bit, because I still smell chlorine in there.
Yeah, you will. It's still gonna have chlorine, just not as much. I tasted it and smelled the new water. Doesn't smell as chloriney, so that's good, but yeah.
Depends on where you're at.
Well, of course, right. Everything's concentrated, and some of the pipes are older than all of us, so.
All the pipes I smelled it in are less than five years old.
Yep.
And it was bad enough for your eyes and water.
Yeah.
Not like a swimming pool.
Well, we will continue to work on the testing and the all that, while we work on getting that up and running and fully operational, so. Other than that, is there any other, other business? Okay, um, to number fifteen, motion and a second to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, okay.
For your, Arthur Schaefer, Campbell Fordice.
Thank you, everybody, for coming.